Is Justin probably here tonight?
I don't know if he's still.
I'll have to see. Doesn't seem early. I have a question.
They're yelling across the room. He's still at home.
He's okay. Thank you.
How do you think about it?
Yeah, sound good. He didn't leave many locks or calls or switches or anything like that. How about you?
Yeah, one or two left.
I bet. Yeah, 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 I was gonna say that's what it's all about. Yeah, and I tell people, I said, you think this college, your kids are gone, but you have the best.
Just takes you to another level, right?
You're like, Brenda, yes, sir. Courtney came over too little, because she was trying to help her mom or something. And Courtney's telling little, and her mom, he doesn't need that, he doesn't need that. And it was like, Brenda, I said, I'm sitting right there with kind of an angle. I said, did you hear mom? Yeah. I said, he doesn't need anymore. She says, yeah. When they were real little, she used to kill me. She would come in, she'd have sex. Little kids. Come in here. Hey, Laura. Let me show you what.
How you doing, Mr. Webb?
Good, good to see you. How you doing?
She's spreading it all out.
We're doing fine.
I said, well.
Well, I sure do this.
What call is that? I said, well, if you didn't, you're lying. Look how much.
No, look how much you saved.
You know what kind of work. She said.
We got some chicken bowl.
I just say it the heck of right, because it's not gonna be any good. No.
All right, it is six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call our meeting into order. Today is Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. If you're joining us through virtually, hopefully using your smartphone or computer on Zoom, when it's time for public comments or input, we ask that you use a raise hand feature in that device. In just a moment, we'll ask you to stand for a moment of silence, then after that moment of silence, Commissioner Mark Saxon will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to remember that which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, and justice for all.
First item of business will be to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is statement in remarks from citizens. This is for anything that's not on our agenda for tonight. Yes, ma'am. If you would just state your name and address for the record, and you can go ahead.
My name and address?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. I am Jerry Byrd, currently a resident of Oconee County. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Efficient? Thank you. I'd like to ask the board four questions this evening related only to Oconee County. Please respond with a show of hands, if you don't mind.
Ma'am, we'll listen to your comments, but we're not going, there's no interaction at this point. We'll.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, my questions are, are you in the building business? Are you connected to a company that services builders? Do you have relatives in the building business? And do you know the difference in between right and wrong? Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I am here to request that you, as a board, bring the building maintenance code to a vote tonight, and all of you vote for it. Recently, I have had to contact the code enforcement and environmental health departments of Oconee County. Matt with environmental health was able to get things done. Gabby with code enforcement was also knowledgeable and efficient, but her hands were tied as there is no building maintenance code. I have since determined some, if not all, of the builders in this county are getting by with all but murder. I can personally, personally cite an example of a builder who did not wrap the pipes in the attic in a $500,000 home. They burst and did a lot of damage to the home, not to mention the stress on the family members. I'm currently renting from a slumlord. You all probably know him. He neglects his properties and apparently instructs his employees to turn a blind eye. Therefore, my recent emergency call on December 6th, three attempts on a Sunday, never received a response. My heating bill has run as high as 167, and my air conditioning bill 88. I have records of every bad experience related to the neglect of this slumlord and his employees. I have pictures. Mr. Slumlord owes me to date $1,500. Only you can make the difference by unanimously voting for the building maintenance code. Nothing could be done through, because of no building maintenance code. You know, Matt in environmental health did a great job. Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Webb.
Commissioners, my name is John Webb. I live at 1320, I reside at 1320 Bent Creek Road in, I'd say Watkinsville. Thank goodness, it used to be Bogart before they changed it to, with the post office. And every time I go to a Commissioners' meeting, my wife gets really nervous. She wants to know, what am I gonna say and what am I gonna do? But tonight, I'm coming here to let you know that sometimes, many times, citizens come to you with an axe to grind, with a beef to hash out, some stuff that's going on with them, a question or a comment or something that's really sometimes nasty or dirty. But tonight, I'm coming to tell you that I commend you. Commissioners, you do a great job for our county. February the 1st of this year, I will have been a resident of Oconee County for 51 years. I brought my family here on February the 1st of 1970. So I've seen Oconee County grow, but I want to tell you that the county is doing tremendously well. You should be proud of the work that you're doing as Commissioners and as public servants. So many times, we don't appreciate what we have here. Not only the school system, everybody brags about that, and it is a wonderful school system, but we have a wonderful place to live, thanks to all of your service and all the things that you do. So I wanted to come tonight and just publicly tell you that. And also, I wanted to come and to welcome, as a newest member of your board, my friend, my former employer, the person that I have a whole lot of respect for, Amory Harden. I'm so glad he's a member of the Commissioners Board. I think he will do an outstanding job for you. So I'm pleased that he is a member. I can't wait to hear and see what he does and insight that he brings. So thank you very much for all your service to Oconee County.
Thank you. Anyone virtually? Any statements or remarks from Commissioners?
No, sir.
Do want to say our condolences to the family of Miss Sarah Bell. She was a staple here at Commission meetings and in Town Hall meetings, made just about everyone, and she passed away from cancer, and so we'll miss her a lot. Condolences to her family. Our next item is to approve the minutes from December 1st, 2020, of the regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider amendments to the Unified Development Code. This is Article 2, Article 3, Article 5, Article 10, Article 13, and 15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you have before you the text amendments to Articles 2, 3, 5, 10, 13, and 15. You have the memorandum before you that lists each of those on that first page, and then we also provided the actual text and changes to those. We'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. As far as to say, it addresses the definitions for event venue to exclude agriculture tourism activities. It adds a definition for mobile food service units, adds mobile food service units to table 2.1 as accessory uses, and allows them by right in all zoning districts subject to Article 3 provisions. And also, we've added a distance requirement from property lines for poultry houses, turkey ranges, or feedlots, and animal waste pits. We've added a requirement for commercial dumpsters screening to be brick, stone, or stucco, and architecturally compatible with the primary structure. We've added a requirement that all non-agricultural commercial buildings be constructed onsite and not manufactured or prefabricated offsite unless approval as a special use. We've amended restrictions on agriculture tourism to exempt the agricultural fields from distance buffering requirements for agriculture tourism uses, and we've added restrictions for mobile food units. And we've amended the restrictions on private garages or carports to allow administrative variance from the requirement for detached garages to be in the side or rear yard or 200 feet away from the right of way. Additionally, we've amended to provide for amendments for the home swing pool restrictions to allow in the front yard on corner lots and double frontage lots by administrative variance as well. Men guesthouse restrictions to allow in the front or side yard as administrative variances on properties under 10 acres. I amend the garage apartment restrictions again to allow as administrative variance under properties, properties under 10 acres. Allow traditional subdivisions in the AG zoning district in all character areas except agricultural preservation. Added requirements for street address numbers to be displayed on each lot in a manner acceptable to the fire chief, fire marshal, and planning director for private access drives, decrease the required cul-de-sac radius from 47 feet to 40 feet, corrected format sections in 10.1402, and then added additional special exception variances already listed in Article 3, accessory buildings over 1,000 square feet in residential districts to UDC Page 13-2, and added administrative variances for accessory buildings and structures in the front yard to mirror Article 3 changes. And again, added a definition of event venue from Article 2, and amended definition of event venue to mirror changes in Article 2 under UDC Section Page 13-14, I mean 15-14, and added definition of mobile food services unit to mirror the changes in Article 2. So that's the list of the amendments, and you have those before you in the actual text amendments with markup. So I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any, discuss. We did provide two additional amendments or changes to that from public comment. So we had public comment on the agricultural distance separation. What we had originally proposed was 200 feet from any property line, so that would restrict poultry houses, turkey ranges, feedlots from being 200 feet from any property line. We had comments that suggested that'd be 600 feet, and that there'd be 600 feet, and you see those changes there in front of you. So the 400 would actually be 600 feet from any residential structure, other than any structure on the parcel, the owner of the poultry house, turkey range, or feedlot, and then 600 feet from any property line. And then, we also amended the mobile food service units, Section 30102, to include weddings, so it'd read as wedding, festival, or special event. So those were comments that we received during the, during the process, and wanted to provide those to you and recommend those as additional changes to the ones we've proposed.
Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Good.
I'm good.
Thank you. We open up to any public comment on these changes at this time. Anyone virtually? Would that will entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve amendments to the Unified Development Code, Article 2, Use of Land Structures, Article 3, Restrictions on Particular Uses, Article 5, Subdivisions and Planned Developments, Article 10, Project Design and Construction Numbers, Article 13, Appeals, and Article 15, Interpretations and Definitions.
Second. We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is to discuss and consider revision to the resolution for the issuance of citations. And we have Mr. Justin Kerewak joining us virtually tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The, this is the quarterly update to the citation issuance. In this case, we just had a change in staffing and animal services, and it's been updated to reflect current staff. Happy answer. Any questions?
Any questions on this item? Will entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the revision to the resolution for issuance of citations of county ordinance violations.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider a mid-year employee equity adjustment. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. When we put together the fiscal year 21 budget, this was in the spring. Obviously, the COVID situation was in its infancy. There was a lot of uncertainty regarding the economic climate, so the fiscal year 21 budget had very conservative revenue projections specifically related to sales tax. And as part of it, too, there was no step increase incorporated for the employees. As you recall, the methodology for raises for county employees is the 20-step system, which has been recently adopted, and it moves through at a 2%. We felt it prudent to make sure we preserve the existing positions and not overextend ourselves. We've had six months of revenue projections, revenue received as far as sales taxes go, and we're in a more favorable position now than originally projected. The proposal here is a mid-year equity adjustment, which would not be a step, but it'd be a one-time lump sum equity adjustment. This would be for the staff levels at the department head level and below, of $1,000 for full-time staff and $750 for part-time staff. This would be employees that would be eligible typically for a step increase as part of a successful performance review. The aggregate cost would be $283,783.77, which includes the employer liability regarding taxes. We're recommending approval, again, as just a mid-year adjustment in lieu of what was previously the compounding step. Our anticipation with our revenue projections going forward is that we will resume the step system as part of the fiscal year 22 budget. Happy answer. Any questions you may have?
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Any public comment? Anyone virtually? Will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee mid-year equity adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discussing, consider the 2021 renewal alcohol license for Tees Corner.
Good day, Main Commissioners. This is Tees Corner. They were not able to get their renewal license in with the big group that we did in December, the first weekend, I mean, the first meeting in December. So they've now got it complete. Elise Ninon is still the registered agent. Basically, everything's the same. Their alcohol license fee will be $1,000 for the year, and we're just asking that you go ahead and approve that renewal license for 2021.
Thank you. Any questions for Catherine? Any public comment? Anyone virtually? Can entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the 2021 renewal alcohol license application for Avid Incorporated, AKA Tees Corner.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We do have need of an executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Make a motion that we adjourn the executive session for land acquisition.
Second.
We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make the motion go back to the regular session.
Thank you.
Got motion second and all in favor?
Aha.
Make the motion adjourned.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you all for everything.